Beau?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
We have a quorum, we'll proceed, if everybody would please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item C is the consent agenda, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Well, seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I was gonna bring up that section line closure, that was just a some paperwork cleanup from 2014, right?
Yep. Okay, that's item 10 on the consent agenda, if you haven't seen it. And that was, that was approved in 2014, Beth, is that what you said?
Yeah, it was approved April 8th of 2014, we just didn't do a resolution at that time to close it.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Motion carried, way to mix them up for us, Beth, we almost fell out of our chairs. Item D, public comment, this is a spot on the agenda left open for public comment, if you are not currently on the agenda and, or not coming up later, if anybody has anything? Seeing none, we will move on to item E, bid opening, County Highway.
Is it on? Okay, we bid a used wheel loader and it came in over budget. RDO was the only bidder, $272,000. But it's over budget. So, recommend to reject and rebid.
Okay, but your voice inflection says, was that a question, or was that what you're recommending?
I'm looking like, yeah.
So, recommendation from County Highway from Dennis is to reject this bid and rebid, anybody got any questions? I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Beth?
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve is on.
Steve's on.
Yeah, yes.
Motion carried, Dennis, well, we've got you here, let's sort of, we're gonna have to bring you back in a little bit, let's jump into the road use agreement with Continental.
Okay.
I believe, when you come up, just introduce yourself and, for the record.
My name's Guy Aman, I'm with Continental Resources, we're proposing a road use agreement with Williams County that will essentially allow us all-weather use, certain stretches of the county road, which are highlighted in the agreement. In return for the all-weather use, Continental agrees to put up a bond, take the liability, and also shoulder the construction and maintenance costs of the road during the period specified. This allows us to increase our efficiency, eliminates our downtime, gets our wells on sooner, I mean, there's a lot of benefit to Continental for this. We've implemented this framework in Dunn and McKenzie County, starting in 2023, done it every season since then, and it's been, been a success.
Karen, you've been through the entire agreement and you are okay with the way it's written?
Yep.
Oh, yep.
Okay, anybody have any questions for either one of them? If not, what are the wishes?
I'd make a motion to approve the road use agreement, have the chairman sign.
Seconded, moved and seconded, any other discussion?
I'd further ask that, assuming the commission approves, give me a few days to get my bond secured and such, and I'll get it back to the commission for execution.
The way the, the agreement is written is they have seven days from the date you guys sign it, so is that plenty of time? Or, that was the terms you agreed to, so?
I agree, I just, if I, let me secure the bond and then I'll get it back for execution if that works.
Then we're gonna, just, just so you know, I would rather sign it today and, and the reason, or we have to have the vice chair come in and sign it, because I'm not gonna be available.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I guess if you can't get the bond and the certificate of insurance to us in seven days, just reach out to Dennis or me and we'll see what we can do, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, any other discussion? Roll call, Beth.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go take a nap, since you drove from Dickinson this morning. All right, that brings us to item F. Michelle?
Good morning, Michelle Haugen with Planning and Zoning. Today we have Project LU dash 0103 dash 24, which is Ramsey Hill Exploration. They're requesting a conditional use permit to construct and operate a frac sand facility within the agricultural zoning district. This is located in portions of Section 8, 17, and 18 of Township 154 North, Range 99 West, which is Hofflin Township. Again, like the others that we've seen previously, with Hofflin Township, they are governed by Williams County, so no township comment was solicited on this project. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit to construct and operate the frac sand facility within the agricultural zoning district. The project was originally heard at the December 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. After that meeting, the applicant did withdraw their application prior to it coming here to the Board of County Commission. By doing so, the original application, by withdrawing the original application, it allows Ramsey, allowed Ramsey Hill Exploration to make adjustments and come back in front of the boards. The subject property is approximately 1,109 acres total, however, the applicant is anticipating approximately 593 acres to be utilized for mining. As per the applicant, the mining for this project will be done in four phases, with smaller sub-phases within each phase. The east phase is located within Section 17, center and west phases within Section 18, while the north phase being in Sections 8 and 17. The processing facility is located within the north phase of the project, directly off of 110th Avenue Northwest. The applicant anticipates the mining area to be excavated to depths between 20 and 50 feet. It is their intention to utilize unused clay to refill the mining pits and will be continuously reclaiming the areas as they go. The applicant states the elevation post-mining should be approximately 1,865 feet, with the starting elevation prior to any mining is approximately 1,900 feet. As noted in their project narrative, the processing facility will have a drying operation that will consist of a rotary kiln dryer, cyclone dust collection baghouse, storage building, and loadout scales. Purpose of this facility is to help aid in oilfield production by locally sourcing frac sand needed for operations. Access to the subject property is taken off of 110th Avenue Northwest. It is the intent of the applicant to avoid utilizing 52nd Street Northwest for access. Planning and zoning commission did hear this item at their February 20th, 2025 meeting, and did recommend approval 8 to 0.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Do you have, do you have anything to add? If you do, please come up and... Okay, okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to talk about it?
Hi, this is Jim Freeburg online, if I could make a comment?
Absolutely, please go. Can you restate your name, I didn't catch it.
Yeah, Jim Freeborg. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for, for this opportunity. My family owns a cabin down on 51st Street, near the area to be mined. A concern we have is with well water contamination. As Michelle mentioned, the mining may occur down to a depth of 50 feet, which puts the bottom of the mine relatively close, in a matter of feet, to the water table. And as you know, the, the mining process is to dig it out, send the material to the processing plant, and then use chemicals, let's see, it's clarifying thickeners and flocculants to separate the sand that they want from everything else that comes out of the mine. And then, the stuff that they don't want, including the chemicals, gets pumped back to the hole in the ground. So what we have is 25, a 25-foot layer of mud and chemicals in the bottom of that mine. So, anytime it rains, snow melts, and when the, the landowner puts his irrigation pivots back on, we've got water that's gonna drive that, those chemicals down to the water table. And we're concerned about the water that we drink and use for food in our homes down there. Now, we did ask Ramsey Hill at one of the information meetings about this. And they said that the chemicals that are used are safe because they're the same ones, I'm paraphrasing, the same ones that are used in shampoo, for example. That's fine, but shampoo is an external application. We aren't drinking it, we aren't putting in our food and cooking with it, and it's all over the house. So, I believe there is, and, plus, we don't know what the chemicals are, and we have no way to know what the contamination levels are gonna be in our wells. So I believe we have an unresolved concern there for people's health. Can affect property value if the well gets contaminated. Because of this concern, I respectfully would request this be, not be approved. And if that's not the case, I would at least request that we have an independent study by somebody tells us why it's okay to live with these chemicals if they get into our wells. One final thing you might ask, well, why didn't I bring this up at the planning and zoning meeting? I did provide a letter and I did try to participate in the, in the January meeting, however, there was an issue with the link and I couldn't, couldn't get through for verbal comment. So, again, thank you for the, the opportunity and I'm happy to take any questions if you guys have any, thank you.
Thank you, anybody from the board have any questions? What chemicals did you say that is going to be used?
Their application talks about clarifying thickeners and flocculants.
And I believe, I forget, I forget its name there, but the gentleman, he's, he has quite a history with doing this stuff, so if you would explain...
This one I don't, I'm Mike Chino with Ramsey Hill. The chemicals that are in question is a polyacrylamide flocculent. And we had a representative from the company that we purchases from here at the planning and zoning meeting, and he explained, you know, in detail the chemicals and their uses. It's the main chemical used in all the municipal water treatment plants that basically treats all your water that you have in your homes, if you live in the city. So it's a food-grade flock, flocculent, it's used in numerous household products, including toothpaste. You know, to, without getting into a lot more, you know, going through all the other things that can be used for, but basically, it's used in your water treatment plants. It's got a very short half-life, so once it's, you know, into the ground, it's breaking down quickly, you know, every hour. And in regards to the water, potential of the groundwater, you know, we stay above the water table. Your best filtration, natural filtration is sand, which, so between those two things, it's, you know, it's a, a chemical that is basically used in your everyday life. About having him with me here, you know, he explained it all to the commission and they had no issues or the planning and zoning at that time. I guess if you have any questions further?
I, as I read the application, it sounds like the elevation of the property right now is 1,900 feet, and it's going to be cut down to 1,865. So does anybody know what the elevation of the water table is? Bill, do you know that?
We're gonna need you to come to the mic, please.
I, I believe it's like 1,832 or something right now. I think 1,844 is the top of the spillway.
Yeah, I'm Bill Sheldon, I own part of the land in question here with this permit. Anyway, the highest lake level when it went over the spillway is 1,855. At that point, you know, our water table will rise some, but it's never been higher than that. Because right now, we observe when the water level is approximately 1,832, or whatever it is, right in there, we have springs running out of the water table. So it feeds in and out from the lake levels.
So I would assume...
But it really doesn't get higher than eight, I have many irrigation wells and, you know, it's around 50 feet down is the static water level, approximately, you know. But they had it pretty close on their level of, of the water table. There's several state monitoring wells on the water table, you can go online and get the water level of every well there very quickly. So it's easy to monitor the, the actual water table. Any other questions?
That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one question if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Not that this should impact or influence a decision, but is, is real water available to those cabins? Is it an option, I should say? Does anybody know?
Yeah, the real water line runs right in north of their cabin. There are several neighbors have real water, I have real water. My daughter and son-in-law have real water next door to us, so, so there's a line there.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, obviously I do have a concern if there is possibility of bleaching anything into the groundwater, but when you guys are disposing of this stuff, I mean, does it just, it goes back to where you just got done mining? Is that how I'm taking it? And spread out, or just dumped in a pile, or how does that work?
Well, you get, you know, you're gonna create somewhat of a pit, you know, a mine pit, and then we'll fill it back in with the unused sand and clay, you know, that gets washed out of the sand. So there'll be clays and oversized and finer sands that we can't use, that gets all mixed back together. So we're basically pulling some of the sand out and putting the sand and clay that we don't use back, you know, as a reclamation.
So what percentage of that, like, what, what percent are you taking out, what percent's going back, you think?
Anywhere from, we'll take 30, or 70 to 50% on average, so 30 to 50% will go back, depending on the grade of the sand as it's coming out of the ground.
One question I've been getting is silica dust. Can you, I mean, I, is silica part, naturally part of this, or is silica added? Can you explain that, or is that even part of the process?
Well, the sand naturally is 80% quartz silica mineral. So it's silica sand. Most of, you know, all your sand and the earth is mostly quartz silica, with other percentages of other accessory minerals in that, but silica that, you know, that's concerned is in the dust, which is more created in the crushing or blasting environment. You know, you're fracturing those grains and creating the hazardous dust. A lot of the dust that would be, you know, seen potentially in a mining situation such as this is gonna be more of your organic dust from the clays and the silica dust itself will be minimal because we're not breaking the grains. Once we get into the processing, you know, once it gets dried, it's going through a little bit of abrasion as it moves through the dryer and onto the conveyors and stuff, but that dust is collected via the bank, baghouse dust collection system, and everything's kept in, you know, in duck work and, and fans that suck that up. And the facility will be in a building as well, and we have to meet standards that MSHA sets, you know, for our own employees, they can't get to certain levels, they regulate that. In the mining application, obviously we'll have dust, or water application to keep dust down on our haul roads, where any heavy traffic is. The sand out of the ground is naturally moist at, you know, anywhere from 3 to 5% moisture level. So as we're mining, it's gonna be, you know, basically wet to an extent.
So do you expect, like, on a day that the wind blows, which I know is rare in this country, but do you expect any, like, natural, like, dust storm or anything like that? I assume this sand probably came here from someplace to, at some point in time, but...
Well, we mitigate that by adding, you know, water, we have water trucks, you know, to spray water where we can. And like I say, we're, we're mining natural moist sand. We suggested, and it was added as a condition on the planning meeting, that we construct berms to create, you know, either sight or sound breaks just north of the residences along the lake. And obviously we increased the buffer to a quarter mile, that we're gonna be away from them. And right now, all mining, as of now, is gonna start on the north side of Highway 52, so we're, you know, well far away from, you know, all the concerned neighbors that had spoke that were right along the lake. But there's always a dust plan, you know, there's a dust plan that's, gets submitted to the state for the Department of Air Quality. We have to have the fugitive dust, dust plan to, you know, deal with any fugitive dusts that are created. So it's regulated by, you know, North Dakota.
Chris goes back with Ramsey Hill, I'm aware. The, the one thing too is we're only opening up 40 acres at a time. We'll open up 40 acres, reclaim it, and open up another 40 acres, so it's pretty controllable that way. You know, when we are hauling, we're mainly, we're mainly hauling with an excavator and two offroads and a dozer on the, on the mine, on the actual mining part of it. So it's not like a huge operation, I mean, it's like a, you know, a normal building pad or something, about the equipment you're gonna see out there. It's not like your large coal mines, you know, and stuff, so I mean, it's not, I think it's, you know, just so you kinda know, it's not blown out of proportion that way. You know, when we're hauling with our offroads, we have to keep the ground wet, or it, it, the roads don't hold up, you know. It's the sand, so you wanna keep it moist, just for the offroads alone, you know. And when you really look at the dust that we're gonna be getting off, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna get more, worse dust off of a farm field, you know, there's no doubt, you know, because they create a finer dust that way. And everything coming out of our mine is moist, until it does go into the dryer and everything is regulated by the EPA. We have to have a, a permit from the EPA, you know, on our dust system, our baghouse, so... And, you know, as far as the water goes, I mean, we, we did have a guy here, but, you know, when they talk about chemicals, I mean, this is a chemical they use to treat your water. You know, so it's not, it's not harmful to the water. You know, even if it did get in it, it's not harmful to the water. But after so many hours, that's gone anyways, you know. So, they use them in the water treatment plants, the sewer treatment plants, they, I mean, they use it everywhere, you know, a lot of places, I'm not sure if they're using it in shampoo, I'm not sure if that, if Troy mentioned that last time, but... I don't remember shampoo, but, so I can't say that for positive, maybe they do, I, I don't know, you know, but...
When, when you said that you're monitored by, I guess my, my question would be is who says it's too dusty? And, and how do they know that? You understand what I'm saying, because if it's...
Yeah, MSHA, MSHA monitors it.
Okay.
I mean, they, we, they, they come in and actually test for that, you know.
Do they require, do you have dust traps at different locations around then?
Well, on our system we do, you know, on our dry system we do, you know, so...
Like I was saying, to the, to the baghouse dust collectors. You know, the fan, basically it's a big vacuum, and sucks it at transfer points. And, you know, in regards to the, the, you know, when he says the EPA, it's basically EPA standards that the state has to follow for the air permit that's required. Then we're required to submit semi-annual compliance to the state. So they review, and then if the state comes out and inspects, we have to have everything, you know, daily logs that they would, can inspect if they, you know, wanna see those. So it's kind of a twice-a-year compliance with the state.
Okay, any other questions?
If you gentlemen had a cabin out there in the same location as the residents that are currently there, how would you respond if a frac sand facility was approaching the neighbors and saying, we wanna put up a facility here?
You know, I think I would've asked all the same questions they did, I, you know, I, I'm not lying, I don't, I'm sure I would've, you know, asked all the same questions. The first meeting we went to, there was, or that, we, we never went to the first meeting because we had, happened to have a Christmas party that night, so it didn't work out, we should've just canceled, but we didn't, on the planning commission. We went to the second one, but, but before we went to the second one, we had two open meetings with the landowners and, and all the homeowners. I'm not sure if the gentleman that's on the, on the phone was at either one of them, he might have been. I felt like, you know, by the time we got done with both meetings, I think a lot of questions were answered. I mean, there was a lot of people against it, but I think all the question, I think for the most part, you know, most of the questions got answered. And I felt, at the last meeting, there was obviously a lot less of them, you know, there was, I, I don't, I don't believe anybody was in person that was against it, to my knowledge, you know. I think they were, I think they got their questions answered, I really do. I mean, obviously we got one on the line here that, I'm not sure if he was here at the meeting or not, but... He was on the phone. Oh, okay, all right, I didn't catch your name, but...
How loud is the fan that's used to operate the drying facility? That might be a...
Well, it's, the, the drying facility will eventually be in a building. You know, I mean, it, it might run for a couple of months before the building's up, you know, I'm not saying that, but... It's pretty quiet, it's not loud, I mean, it's no, you're not gonna hear it, there's no, they're not gonna hear it from where they're at, you know, I mean, I suppose if the winds are just right, they might hear a little bit, but you're gonna get more out of the excavator, mining the sand noise than you probably are out of that, out of the dryer itself and the wash plant, you know, all that's fairly quiet. No, I know, but you, you still got the dryer and everything that makes more noise inside, you know. The fan is out, I agree, the fan is outside, but it's sucking through the dryer inside, and it's going out a stack straight up. You know, that'll be approximately... The stack, yeah, that is in the building, I've got ours now. But the, the stack will be approximately, you know, 40, 50 feet tall, you know, so it sends it up, straight up. But the stack's not loud anyway. So it sends it up, straight up, but the stack's not loud anyway, so you don't really hear it, you see it, you know, you'll see steam coming out. So out of the, uh, bag house system, so.
May I make a quick comment on the noise? Right now, we have an oil well rig drilling a mile from my house and everyone else along there approximately same distance. The plant will be half a mile further away than the oil rig and I've yet to hear that rig at night, you know, amazing. And they have far more engines running there than, than the mine would have, far more.
Mr. Chairman, one question?
Yes, go ahead.
Will you use conveyor belts at all in this operation and, and would conveyors help mitigate some of the traffic if, if you were to use them?
Um, we, we do use conveyor belts, but from the mine into the plant, we're actually gonna pump it, uh, pump it with liquid, which is.
Okay.
Quieter and, and better, almost better yet, you know, I mean, it's just, it's all in a liquid form. We are gonna pump it to the plant, the plant will be running twenty-four seven, or it's possibility that it could run twenty-four seven. But the mining operation will be five days a week, just during the day, you know, like a twelve hour, twelve hour shift, uh, five days a week.
And you're round?
Yeah.
And maybe it might be beneficial to explain to, uh, Mr. Freeburg where you plan on starting to mine? You're gonna be, you're gonna start mining right up to the north end or just south of your plant?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna start, we're planning to start mining on the north side of fifty-two. Uh, it'll be, it'll be years up on, on the north side of fifty-two, it'll be years before we're on the south side of Ever. You know, we are, we are working with one more landowner across the road, um, which will, uh, make a big difference as far as staying on the north side of the road. It might not ever go to the south side of the road, but we, you know, to put up that big of a plant, we need, we do need to have so much reserve, so if we need it, we have it, so.
Okay, any, any other questions?
Um, just one more question, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jim Freeborg again, uh, question for Bill Sheldon. Do you know how much it costs to hook up to the rural water?
I didn't quite catch all of it, I didn't quite catch all of the questions.
He asked how much it costs to hook up to rural water?
It's not cheap, it's cheaper than a well. I think the last one, I hooked up with my daughter here about four years ago and our water had froze from the other source. Anyway, I believe it's around six thousand to hook on, I think. I don't know if that's going up, I haven't priced since.
It's, it's around five thousand bucks.
Around five?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, if there aren't any other questions, we will turn it over to the board for any discussion.
Did we come up with, uh, at planning and zoning, there was talk of a, a bond, have we got that?
Yeah, we added it as one of the conditions. It's, um, condition seven, a reclamation bond is to be posted for a hundred and twenty-five percent of a North Dakota licensed engineer's estimate. This bond is for each forty acre mine and a new bond must be posted prior to any mining on a new forty acre tract.
There is nothing, we're, we're waiting on, either you wanna, uh, discuss it more or we need a motion?
Well, I would make a motion to approve following staff comments.
With a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I would second.
Motion and seconded, now we'll open it up to the discussion of the board.
Um, I just see number six, prior to any mining, south of Fifty Second Street begins, berms are to be built and trees must be planted. You know, I, this is a multi-year project, obviously, would it not make sense that the trees just be planted? Because then they can get established and watered and growing, um, cause I, I don't know how tall the trees that are gonna be planted, but in my experience, my one footers are still two feet tall and they've been in there for seven years, so.
Oh, the north, so the, the, the rectangle box that sits north to south there, where the cursor is just a little bit to the left of that, that's where the plant will be. And then that bottom half is where they're gonna start mining and they figure, according to the gentleman there, he, he was estimating it'll be about ten years before that section is mined out. So it, uh, and, and, you know, ten, ten years ago, we couldn't use our sand because it didn't work. So now somehow or another we can, in ten years, they probably, you know, they might not even be using it, or, you know, who, who, who really knows? But, and as far, as far as like planting the trees right now, um, they're farming it, so.
I was thinking, planning and zoning commission meetings along with Barry, and I will say at the last P and Z meeting on twenty February, I think there was pretty robust support, um, for this facility, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion from the board? Steve, do you have anything to add?
No, no.
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion and a second on the floor. No further discussion, Beth, roll call, please?
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, that's it for planning and zoning.
Um, I was wondering, I, I forgot, when Dennis was up there, I forgot, I had, had that deal with that township, so before, before we run, before I lose.
Let's, uh, let's put him under reports of departments, Dennis, I think we need you again, because Barry's got a little something too. Go ahead, Barry.
So I was, I was approached by a guy that farms over in Golden Valley and seeing how we're the township board for Golden Valley, I told him I would ask him about it. So there's a, there's an old, there's a, there's a lease road that goes down and turns and goes east to an, uh, abandoned well or it's been reclaimed. But the section line continues to the south and he farms both sides of the section line. But, but this time of year and where it's, you know, good and sloppy, the, the, some, some of the kids like to go play around. And he was wondering if it would be possible for him to temporarily block access to that section line when the conditions are wet? You know, he, he would, he, he doesn't want it closed, he just want, he would appreciate them not out four wheeling around in his, uh, field. And I told him I would bring it up and ask.
Well, the only way to block it off would be, uh, or in my opinion, would be to put road close signs up for temporary.
Correct.
Just like it's impassable with any other, even a county road can happen.
Right, and that's, that's what I mentioned and seeing how we are the township board for that township. Would we have a couple of them signs, we could loan them while this was going on?
Sure do.
Well, I guess, uh, it depends on what the rest of the board.
I, I guess I have a, a question on it, Barry, um, and it's probably for Karen, can, can we legally shut it down?
Yeah, but section lines are a little bit different, they're supposed to be open to the public all the time really, and you can't close them that way.
Most, most roads are on section lines and we do close them when it gets really bad.
Well, I'm just telling you from a legal standpoint, Barry, you know, that you can close them under procedures in estate law and you can, you know, I suppose temporarily block some of them, but they have to file a petition with the board. I mean, it can't just be, you know, let's make a motion and do it, I mean, you, there's a process you have to go through.
Well, when, when we get notifications of different townships that are closing roads, have they, do they just call the county highway, like, hey, this road's impassable? Can we close it until further notice?
We have in the past and then they get the proper signing, the type three barricades and close it for a day or two or a week or whatever it is.
Is that not legal?
Well, if it's a section line, if it's a section line, then I would say no unless somebody's petitioned the township to temporary close or block or obstruct the section line.
Well, how, how about this then, it, I'm, you know, he called and asked about it and he is, uh, lives in the township and we are the township board, so I would assume that this would be his version of petitioning the township board.
I, I, I would say that he should send something in writing to the board then saying, you know?
Well, when the, when the state DOT, if, when the weather's terrible, they put barricades over the interstate and keep people from driving, is it not the same thing? Cause it's a public safety concern, so if somebody were to go down that road and it's muddy, terrible, whatever, flip over and die? I mean, it's on a section line, is it not, would we not be responsible because we didn't maintain the road or didn't block it off? I mean, if they drive past the barricade and flip over, is it not different?
I guess what I'm just saying is that section lines by state law are open to the public. They can't be closed, they can't be obstructed without a petition filed with the governing authority, the road authority. I mean, I guess if the state blocks or obstructs things, you know, without going through the proper procedure, I mean, I'm just telling you, I, I, I can't do any, I mean. I, I, I would guess that there's probably lots of things like that going on, I mean, get an example like oil well, I mean, the NDIC approves, you know, oil pads, you know, that kind of cover section lines, on top, right on top of section lines. But nobody comes to the county, you know, to block it or obstruct it, but that happens really, so.
Right, so, so if I, if I read, get back in touch with him and ask him just to write a request to, to us to, to do this? I mean, and it's, it's not, he was real clear, he doesn't want it closed, he just would like to keep, when it's wet, to keep some people out of there because they, uh, you know? Couple four-wheel drive pickups, when it's good muddy, can do a lot of damage to the prop.
Does he have two sixty-six foot chisel plows?
Well, he's got a couple pipe racks and I told him not to do that, but, um, anyway, so I'll, I'll get it back in touch with him and he can send.
Yeah, just a simple letter or.
Okay.
I mean, I guess even if he just wants to email you something in writing saying, you know, that he's landowner, you know, and he wants this, wants to be able to temporarily block the section line.
And so in, well, because the frost is coming out and, and all that, if we, if we are okay doing this, he can send me the email, I can forward it to Karen. And we can still get this handled now, right?
Oh, no, let you off the hook, okay? Okay, we got our legal advice from Karen, we're still the board, we can decide and do what we want, not meaning that we can do it right, but we, we got our legal advice. Karen doesn't need to stand up here and defend her situation, she told us what the rules are, guys. So thank you, Karen, I appreciate that and you don't need to stand up and defend it to us.
And that's my concern, who becomes the legislative body that determines when that sign goes on and off? Otherwise, we could have people arbitrarily doing this all over the county.
You, you're absolutely right, um, you know, I, I think we all, I'm sure, I, I farm across the section line and there are times that, uh, people decide to drive down it. It's, it's a situation, um.
And I don't think it's so much that they're driving, you know, that, I don't, he wouldn't have so much heartburn if they stayed on the section line. It's as they, they use that to get, you know, over the hill and out of sight and then it turns into, uh, you know, you know, well, what if, I mean, it turns into a regular mud.
Right, but then it's a trespassing issue and then we gotta call the sheriff. I, I, and, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, Barry, I, I've been in the same boat, I, I've watched him drive down the section line and then I have a big, uh, spin out in the middle of the field. So, I mean, I get it, but it's a trespassing issue then and I, I don't know, I, I'm, I struggle a little bit with shutting down a section line. Because I agree with Chris too, it's, who decides? Muddy to you might not be muddy to me.
Well, right, but, you know, I'm knowing the fella, I personally myself, I trust his judgment, I mean, he, he's not, you know, out trying to, you know, kind of somehow to close the section line without actually closing it kind of a thing, but, you know? I just, I'd bring it up.
That's good, that's good.
It'll teach you to bring stuff up.
Well, where, where we're at right now, if, is somebody interested in, uh, making a motion or is there more discussion? Cause if we wanna make a motion, we can sure do that.
Well, I, I would make a motion that we allow this and I will get back in touch with him and he can get hold the county highway and get some signage out there. Cause I, I would much prefer that over, uh, you know, piece of drill pipe or something like that, but.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, Beth?
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Who?
Motion carried. Okay, uh, now we're up to the auditor, it looks like Beth's got a whole bunch of stuff to tell us about.
I was just, uh, I received a letter from the city stating that they were gonna have a special election on June tenth to do, um. To extend and reenact the one percent sales and use tax dedicated to the Park District. The Park District cannot request having an election, only the city can, or an entity like that, the Parks cannot. Um, and so you guys have to decide, um, according to our agreement, whether or not you want to allow me to go ahead and do this special election. It will be on June tenth, I decided, um, because that's the original date that they asked. And then if you do, um, request my office to do this election, then I need those other documents and requests, um. Passed as far as the time where we're gonna set the election, blah, 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 blah. They cannot do it themselves, um, they do not have the authority to do it themselves, they do not have the authority. Karen.
So the city can't, the city can't hold their own election?
Yes, they can, they just don't want to. Yeah, yes, they can, yeah. Yeah, well, and just for the record too, basically what the city is asking, an election, special election for is to amend their home rule charter to allow this tax really, that's what it boils down to. Because their current home rule charter doesn't allow a sales tax to be dedicated to the Park District, so.
So how, how, they paid for everything before, because there's one in place right now.
A ta, a sales tax?
Yeah, that's how they built the ark.
Well, yeah, under their home rule charter, they were able to do that, uh, how they did their ark, I'm not really quite sure because they're.
I let you off the hook last time, but I can't do it this time.
They had a vote, but the vote was on an election year. This is not an election year and they need to have it now because by the time the election year next year, it'll be too late.
So what does this have to do with their home rule charter?
Because it, and in order to impose a sales tax for particular things, the city has to have the authority to do that. Well, they have a home rule charter that gives them the authority to do that, so they have to amend it.
But they don't, because it's currently in place.
Well, the home rule charter that they have on their website says that they have a tax in place, fifty, seventy-five percent supposed to be dedicated property tax relief and twenty-five percent to the job development fund. Now, whether they've amended their home rule charter since then, I don't know for sure really.
That's not the, that's not the tax we're even talking about. The tax that we're talking about is a one percent that built the ark. And half of it went to the debt relief on the ark and the other half went to their, so, I mean, it's there, so we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel here.
No, I realize that, but their ballot language says that they want to amend their home rule charter, so I'm just telling you to allow this tax, so.
Help.
So what, just for devil's advocate, what, if, if, if we said no, then what? I mean, do they have their, would they hold the election themselves? Cause I'm, I'm looking, I'm thinking that this is, be a good way to get it done and then you don't gotta foot the bill or?
They, they.
Hang on for one second, I think Helen has something, so let's, let her go.
Well, I, I just wanna say it's, Karen wasn't asked to give any legal opinion, the city legal has sorted out how they will.
Well, I, I just wanna say it's, Karen wasn't asked to give any legal opinion. The city legal has sorted out how they will manage whatever, sorry, whatever they need to do. What they've asked us for is, would we administer the special election?
And we can bill them back for...
Yeah, under the joint powers agreement we have, or the election agreement we have, they have to pay ten thousand dollars to hold special elections.
This is basically a contract to run their election for them, for ten grand.
Yep.
Well, just, just so you, and, and I, I have a question after I make a statement. My, my one statement is I think it makes perfect sense that one entity runs the elections in Williams County. I think it makes it, it makes it cleaner. It, we've got people that know what they're doing. That's a compliment to your staff. You know what you're doing. You can run it. Now, my question that comes after that is, how are you looking for staff?
We, uh, my staff and I talked about it. We had two that were gone, but they're back now and we talked about it before they left. And we can make things and arrange things around other stuff that we have to be doing so that we will be able to administer the election. It, it's kind of hard when we have somebody come up with an election on, off election year because we're not ready for it. We have other things that we're thinking about and other things we're doing. Oh, and other things we're doing that we're not really ready for something like this. But we will be ready if the commission says, do it.
There's a book called Who Moved My Cheese? We can get it for you and it's, it's a really good one.
Could you get it for me?
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, according to all the documents you've received from the city and by state law, you have plenty of time to do this by June tenth.
Yes, Karen gave me a...
Okay.
We have a little program that she puts a date in and it gives me an algorithm and all this other stuff, so, yes, I do have plenty of time. The only thing that, um, I'm going to make sure is this time they give me the money on time. Last time we had a special election, it was like really close to the day and we still didn't have the money, so I'm gonna make sure they do it like they're supposed to. But, yeah, and then if you do approve, you guys did get the ballot language. And then on that page is all the requests that I need. And when you're done directing me to do this election, I will tell you what things I need approved today.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
I guess I would make a motion to approve or to prove the contract with the city in order to run this special election. No? Shaking your head.
Don't make it harder than it needs to be.
No, I'm not going to. I'm just saying that we already have a contract in place. This is just to approve the cand, the county handling the election, really, so, yeah. So, there's no con, extra contract. We have one in place.
I would strike the word contracts, so approve us handling the election.
Is there a second?
If Karen approves, I'll second.
Motion and a second. Um, any discussion? Beth, roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. What other motions do you need now, Beth?
Okay, I need to approve, um, us to have a polling location at the Williston ARC meeting rooms. I need you to approve the precincts number thirteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, thirty-one, thirty-three, forty-one, forty-three, and fifty-one to be held. Those are the precincts at the polling location at the ARC. I need you to approve the polling hours from eight to seven. I need you to approve Lois Ryerson and Cassie Peterson as our inspectors. And I need you to approve Madrine Sandvold and Claire Fullvag as our judges.
And we can do that all in one motion?
Yes, please.
I would move to approve that as presented by Beth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Thank you, I did...
Painfully, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Anything else from you?
No, I'm good.
You're good? All right, thanks. Um, did I miss any department heads that we needed to talk to today? I don't believe so. Looks like it's, uh, Helen.
Good morning. You have a position report in front of you. I would add one corrections officer position. We have a resignation yesterday. And so, request four positions in the sheriff's office to be approved. By the way, the patrol deputy position listed there is one that we've held open, um, until we, we got the other positions filled. And so now, it's always been approved. We just haven't had it on the list.
What other position, if I may ask, so I can add it to the minutes?
Corrections officer.
Okay, what are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve those positions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes. Motion carried.
I have an item that is not on the agenda. I just, and, and in the process of getting it sorted out, it's a request from TISA for us to fill out what's called a certification of significant community support. So, they've put in for a federal grant slash loan and they need a, a support letter from a local agency. And so I've just had a little communication with TISA over the last few days. And so it is related to their sanitation process and they're looking to replace a couple of trucks and looking to get some federal grant or loan dollars for that. So, it's, it's very simple. It, it just says that we support, um, this tribal government doing this work and then it doesn't have any, uh, negative impacts in the community. And so I'd request permission for the chairman to sign that.
So, we're looking for a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Beth, did you get Steve's second on that one? I'd say we take Steve. Yep, that's right. Any, uh, do you feel included, Steve?
Yes, thank you.
No problem. I'm here for you. Any, uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Oh, gosh. Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes. Motion carried.
All right, we do contract with a company to procure, I guess, aerial imagery of the county, which we, we have done on a three-year cycle. And so I did budget for that. We're in the, we're in the third year or we're, we've finished the third year, so we're in a, we're in the year to fly. That money is in the, in the G I S budget and so I have a contract for that work to be completed this year. And because it's a high dollar amount, I typically bring that to you for approval. So, the cost would be two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars. I need your permission to complete that project this year and then have the chairman sign the contract.
I have moved to complete that project as presented and have the chairman sign.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No discussion? Roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that's all I have.
That's all you have? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item I, adjournment. Nine o'clock.